Okay, I'd like to call to order the Santa Barbara City Planning Commission meeting of February 7, 2008. Ms. Rodriguez, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Vice Chair Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Justice, absent. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Chair Myers?
Here.
Ms. Hubbell, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of exigent items?
Chair Myers, the only notice here is the project at 1298 Coast Village Road, which had originally been scheduled up for this date, has been rescheduled to March 13th and will be re-noticed.
Okay, thank you very much. Announcements and appeals?
Yes, I do have some announcements. First of all, 518 State Street, this was a decision that regarding a new building on that parcel that was approved by the staff hearing officer and appealed to the planning commission, who also upheld the show's approval. The decision was upheld by city council this last Tuesday, so the project stands approved. Also, I'm happy, I think I may have announced this the last time, but I'm not certain, but Melissa Hetrick, who has been a coastal analyst for the coastal commission, will be joining us on February 19th as a new environmental analyst for the city. And also, in addition to being able to watch today's hearing live on your computer, beginning on Monday at noon, you will be able to access today's planning commission hearing and the meeting archives on the planning commission site at www.santabarbarca.gov/pc. High-speed internet access is required to view the videos. So I think that's all I have to announce.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbell. Okay, at this time, we'll take comments from members of the public on items that are not on our agenda. If anyone has such a comment, will you please come forward? Seeing no slips or no one coming forward, I'll close that public hearing and move on to our first item, which is a consent item. It's the application of Applied Environmental Technologies, Inc., agent for Old Cabrillo Warehouse at 130 Garden Street. Staff presentation given by Kathleen Kennedy.
We, staff request that with just one piece of information, as requested by the planning commission, we have added a condition of approval requiring demolition and recycling, that the demolition materials and construction materials be recycled. We request the staff report be waived.
Do I hear a motion to that?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any further comments that wish to be presented by the applicant? Seeing none? Any public hearing, any comments from the public regarding this particular item? Seeing no slips or anyone coming forward, I'll close the public hearing for this item. Any discussion by the planning commission? Seeing no lights, I have one quick question regarding removal of material. We have a footprint of removal of material. Have there been any tests done on soil underneath the buildings? And is that, well, that might present a problem, once we get down into it?
Chair Myers and commissioners, it's my understanding that they have done all the required testing and that they've limited it to this area and they don't expect that they will have to extend the excavation any further. We have put in the conditions of approval, if there's any further excavation required, it would require another CDP.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have one quick question. On the conditions of approval, on page five, last item, F, where it talks about prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner of real property shall, I was under the impression at the site visit, the site would remain occupied and there was room for access around the side.
We could change that to be prior to issuance, or prior to final inspection.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, seeing no other comments by the commission, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the project with the findings in the staff report.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None, motion carries, seven, zero.
Six, zero.
Yes?
Six, zero.
Oh, I'm sorry, six, zero.
Okay.
And here are extract plans that you just put on the, our next, our next item is a discussion item, U.S. 101 Improvement Project Data Update. Our staff report will be given by Michael Berman.
Good afternoon, Chairman Myers, members of the commission. This is the annual update for the Highway 101 Improvements Project. The CDP for this project was approved back in December 2004. One of the conditions of approval of that project required that there be an annual update. The last update occurred in March of 2007, and since that time, there's been substantial progress made. The progress includes that the architectural board review reviews have been completed, except for the railroad bridge. The railroad bridge has not yet been totally designed yet, and when it has been, it will be submitted for ABR review. The Sycamore Creek Wetland Project is proceeding, the trees have, most of them have been removed. The roundabout property that is required to facilitate the roundabout on Coast Village has mostly been secured and will be secured by the end of March. The zoo sound wall is no longer a part of the project, it's been removed. And finally, the coastal development permit has been extended to December 2008. The applicant here is, applicant is here to represent the progress on the project. We have with us Mr. David Beard of Caltrans Project Manager, Mr. Fred Luna, the Santa Barbara Council of SB CAG Project Manager, Michael Sandecki, the Caltrans Environmental Staff, and finally, we have Kirsten Ayers, who's the community outreach liaison, and she will provide a brief presentation. All of us are available to answer any questions. I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Ayers at this point.
Good afternoon. Here we go. So we're just going to provide a brief update, and we're keeping it very brief for your schedules, but feel free to ask questions at any time. So as you know, the Highway 101 operational improvements between Milfus and Hot Springs are the largest construction project by Caltrans in our county, approximately $57 million for construction and landscaping. The project is funded by state highway funds and Measure D funds, and the project partners are SB CAG, the city, and Caltrans. This map, which is also on the front of the fact sheet, it should be in front of you, is color-coded by stage, so you can see when the project components start, and there are some in the back of the room for the public as well. Just to give you brief, project limit starts right around Milfus Street, goes about two miles down to about a half a mile past Hot Springs. The main project components include the addition of a third lane southbound on Highway 101. On the northbound side, we have a new roundabout at the intersections of Old Coast, Hot Springs, Coast Village, and Cabrillo. Northbound, we have a new merge lane from Cabrillo to Salinas, and then from Salinas northbound, we have a new third lane as well that will be built. Bridge work includes bridges at Milfus, the undercrossing at Cassique Street that will connect Cassique under the freeway, bridge work at Sycamore Creek, and then bridge work down at Cabrillo for the pedestrian path. Right now, the contract is out to bid. Caltrans will be opening the bids March 5th, so next month. In June of 2007, permits were received by Army Corps, Department of Fish and Game, and Regional Water Quality Control Board. The coastal development permit has been extended to December of 2008 for work to begin. We anticipate work beginning this summer, so we're well within that. The CDP has been extended for the wetland mitigation site at Sycamore Creek. That work will begin by January 2009. As Michael mentioned, the zoo sound wall has been withdrawn from the project at the request of the zoo, and then the Cabrillo multipurpose path section near the Union Pacific Structure. Right now, the city has approved funds, SB CAG is set to approve those funds as well at the February meeting, so later this month. After that, Caltrans will perform environmental analysis, options will be evaluated, and a preferred alternative will be selected. Then detailed engineering and design work will occur and right-of-way with UP, and then the path will be constructed and built. As I mentioned, the bid opening will be next month for the primary contract for the Milfus to Hot Springs project, with expected construction this summer. The landscaping and the Cabrillo multipurpose path improvements at that UP structure will be constructed during the project timeframe, but will be a separate project, separate contract. We have an extensive transportation management plan with this project, including the public awareness campaign, program called Curb Your Commute, which I'll get into in just a minute, that encourages ride share, as well as motorist information in the form of Highway Advisory Radio, which is new to our area with this project, changeable message signs. We'll also have double fine zones in the construction area, and that will be signed so CHP can enforce that, as well as reduced speeds of 55 miles per hour. We've been doing outreach for over the last two years to a wide variety of community groups and businesses. We'll be starting additional outreach to residents and businesses in the entire project area. Our plan is to mail to over 30,000 residents and businesses between the Milfus area all the way to Carpinteria, to give them project information. Right now, we're also working on the website, which should be up in the next few months, so it'll be up a few months prior to construction, which is a pretty significant step for a Caltrans project. We also have the hotline open right now, it's been open for about two years, at 888 SB Roads, where people can call to get updated information and also ask questions. And then we've been distributing this fact sheet that you have in front of you. We're also working on a more extensive piece for that mailing, that includes the detour route maps as well. We've been doing outreach to a lot of different community groups, with emphasis in the Milfus area, the general Santa Barbara area, and then the Montecito area. These are the few, a few of the groups that we've been meeting with, in addition to a number of significant development projects in the area, to coordinate construction, timing, schedules, routes of trucks, if there is any overlap. On the screen right now is the Curb Your Commute Program. This program launches later this month with a large employer workshop, that's being sponsored by the county, the city, and Traffic Solutions, and the Chamber of Commerce, to encourage ride share. It includes a flex work consulting, tax savings, ride share, carpool matching, free van pools, cash incentives, and prizes and competitions to encourage ride share. The whole point of this is to reduce congestion during the construction project, by getting people to share rides, or telecommute, or flex their schedules to avoid peak periods. So that's it for today's updates. We're going to go from two lanes to three lanes in general in this area. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. We have immediate questions from the commission. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions and a suggestion. My first question is, do we have a local landscape architect involved in this process?
Hi, Commissioner Larson?
If you could just state your name as well, please.
My name is David Beard with Caltrans, I'm the project manager for this project. The landscape design was jointly conducted by both Caltrans landscape architect, as well as a local landscape architect from this area, on various portions of the project. And furthermore, by working through the ABR HLC, we received quite a bit of input from local landscape architects through that process.
Great, great. My second question is just a little further up. We recently have had the removal of several very nice pepper trees at the Cabrillo off ramp, and, I mean, Carrillo, excuse me, on ramp, northbound. I mean, it's scalped, and we lost a lot of trees. Could you, I know this is sort of blindsiding you a little bit, but I just need to know what people are thinking there, and can we get some trees back?
Yeah, that is a different project that Caltrans is undertaking, I believe, to widen that ramp. And generally, when we do that kind of tree removal, it's in conjunction with some kind of plant for replacement planting, to follow that job. I don't know any specifics about that project, but that's reasonable to expect.
Okay, thanks. I would hope for substantial size of trees, because what was taken was significant. And my suggestion, lastly, is you have a nice website, www.SBroads. I can't suggest strongly enough that you add a webcam, so people could actually look at peak traffic. Is it on there?
Yes, actually, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I meant to say that in my overview, it was on the screen, but I didn't bring attention to it. We do hope to have at least one camera up prior to construction, it's installed, we're just waiting for it to be connected.
Great.
So the website will have that at Milfus, and then about a year into construction, there'll be a second traffic camera in the Montecito area, that we'll also put on the website. And we've been having a great collaboration with the various agencies. As additional traffic cameras are available in our area, we'll also put links up on the website, so you can go to one source and view all of the traffic cameras.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Beard, item four on this operational improvements is the, replace the Sycamore Creek Bridge, and a windmill that I was tilting at several years ago was asking about the possibilities of collaborating with the railroad. I know that's often an oxymoron, as we found out with the sound wall, but about opening up that drainage, so that, as I understand it, what's happening is that the expanded drainage will go under 101, but it'll hit the constricted drainage at the railroad bridge, and that I had asked about, and I think others too, about the possibilities of expanding that throughput there to improve flood conditions. Do you, was that explored, or do you have any comments that made about that project? I don't know where it fits on your timetable either.
The bridge for the railroad is, of course, owned by Union Pacific, they may have their own timeframe for when to replace it. For our part, we're building the bridge for the future capacity that could be in that creek someday. We've worked with flood control in order to do that. In the short term, a portion of the bridge is going to be blocked to flow, and so it will, in the short term, actually match the railroad bridge, until such time as other bridges and portions of the channel can take the higher flow. So we have sort of an interim situation for now.
Okay. And was there any, was there any dialogue with the railroad about doing that sooner than later?
Yes, there was, and they didn't have a specific schedule for that bridge. Their capital program can vary a lot, and oftentimes, they do multiple bridges in an area all at once, and so they didn't comment on how the timing would potentially work with ours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beard, as I said, windmill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. First, I wanted to say that the PR outreach report is excellent, and really get a good sense of who's been contacted and what the issues were for those different groups, so I am greatly appreciative of that. Can we put the slide up that talks about Curb Your Commute? Do we have that? And while that's happening, I also wanted to comment on the webcam. When that happens, that's a real public benefit, and it almost doesn't matter who owns it. I know the Patterson 101 webcam is linked to my early morning radio show site, so when I go to their webpage, I can check the traffic cam while I'm checking other stuff, so I'm presuming that you'll send a press release or Let Media webpage is linked to that as well.
We will, and I'll also update you as well, so that you know when it's up as well.
Great, those are really helpful. As I look at this, I'm delighted to see all the kind of good incentives, but what's missing for me is any reference to the train, and I'm wondering if there's a reason why rail tickets and rail participation is not included on this list.
Unfortunately, I can't comment on that. We could arrange a separate update for you, if you'd like, specifically on the Curb Your Commute program. We are limited in terms of funding for this program, so the main component is to work with employers, to try to get employers to sign up first, and then their employees will qualify, to try to get the largest number of people participating. In terms of the train, though, I don't have a...
Okay, we do have people that commute from Ventura into Santa Barbara via train, and we'd like to have more people doing that, and I can't think of a better time to promote it than when people are sitting in their cars on the freeway, watching the train whiz by them at 80 miles an hour, and they're stuck. And whether they're in a carpool or a van, they're going to be stuck still, at least they'll have company. But the, I see bus passes, and I would like to get a report back showing us that train tickets, or some kind of train participation, dollar a day for not driving alone, does the train count, to see if this, that can be incorporated.
I'll pass that along.
Thanks.
Mr. White?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask Mr. Beard about where we are on the, what's the status of the pedestrian pathway under the bridge? It sounds like it's been a work in progress, and I'm wondering whether you have any specific design at this point, or can, any discussion you can provide us on that?
Okay, the bridge over Cabrillo Boulevard and the pedestrian and bikeway enhancements that go with that are a separate project, with the design work ongoing. It's down to two alternatives that involve constructing a new bridge over Cabrillo Boulevard. And so that's been, that's going on right now with a design consultant, and environmental reevaluation that will go with that is ongoing. The intention is to have the construction of that part of the project going on within the timeframe of the overall parent project. So even though it's still in design right now, it's a shorter construction timeframe, and the timing should still work within the overall construction period we told you about.
I have a quick question regarding the Curb Your Commute. You have a kickoff on February 28th, and that, and so you have, has there been any preparation for that kickoff, and has there been any kind of feedback as to what you've got here? And if so, I'd like to hear a little bit about it, and I'm very anxious to hear how this progresses over the next three or four months.
Well, we are too, to be honest with you, and we have done a lot of work, and it's great, we've got a wonderful partnership. The mayor is sponsoring the kickoff, as well as Supervisor Carvahal and Steve Cushman at the chamber. And we already have over 100 people signed up for this workshop, which is fantastic. We're hoping to get even a few more. It's with the largest employers in our region, so it goes from Carpinteria to Alita, and we'll definitely report back. We hope to have great progress with this program, and so far, we've even gotten some companies signed up in advance of the workshop, so.
Oh, great.
We're hearing good things, and I think a lot of employers are ready for this now, so we're hoping a lot of participation will...
Great, yes, yes.
Are universities and colleges in that group too?
Yes, and actually, we're able to share at this workshop some pilot programs that have already occurred at some of the larger employers, such as the city, the county, UCSB, and Cottage, and how they're expanding those pilot programs to greater benefits for the commuters, more people, more types of programs. And so it's not sort of pie in the sky at this point, we're really showing, hey, these programs work, here's what's worked so far with certain companies, and here's how they're expanding them, so, you know, here are all the options, sort of a one-stop shop, if you will.
I'd also like to reiterate your website. What is the suffix on the website?
It's SBroads.com.
Dot com?
It's not up yet, but it will be up in the next few months.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a follow-up question for Mr. Beard, similar to what Commissioner White was asking. On the new railroad trestle that crosses over Cabrillo, that will also allow for pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, I think in one of the prior presentations, you had mentioned that the options under consideration involve realignment of the railroad tracks to allow you to build a new bridge while the old bridge is in place, and if that's the case, which way are the tracks moving? Are they moving toward the freeway, toward the bird refuge? Can you fill us in on that?
Yes, previously, I mentioned that there were two alternatives, and one of them would maintain the same alignment that's there now, and one of them would not, it would realign the railroad tracks closer to the freeway. And so we're evaluating those two, and the pluses and minuses of both of those approaches.
Thank you. Anything else from staff? No? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for this particular item. We have one slip, and anyone else that wishes to speak to this item should fill out one of these and bring it to staff. Paula Westbury? Hi, Paula. If you could keep your comments to around two minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I have a letter I didn't get sent in, and I hope you can read the letters, they're very important. The Highway 101 should not be widened at all. We have a lot of tribes and villages alongside in the trees and in the woods that help the traffic to flow, so you're not accomplishing anything by covering them up with cement. It's a big deal. I do a lot of humanizing, so I tell you what's happening in Santa Barbara. The tourists come for the beauty of Santa Barbara, they don't want to lose at least 500 trees, and save a fortune by just leaving everything the way it is, and just letting the tourists enjoy looking around when they have to stop. Most of the traffic is tourists. So that's the problem of living in a tourist area. You either give up the tourists, or you have traffic. So we make a lot of money from the tourists, just let them have the view. Don't destroy the trees, there's a lot of trees. There's no place to widen, much of that area, there's just no place at all. So just save your money, and just enjoy the view. When you build the tracks, don't move them. Don't move them, okay? There's a lot of alternative transportation, that's all you need. Santa Barbara's not supposed to be Los Angeles, okay? It's very important. I had a bumper sticker on this for about 10 years, so I hope you don't widen it, save scenic Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Seeing no other public coming forward or having no other slips, I'll close the public comment, period. Bring it back to the commission for any further comments. Anybody else have anything they wish to add? Mr. White?
Just, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the update, I just feel like this was a good idea then, and I personally appreciate getting this update, so thank you very much.
Ms. Larson?
Just adding my thanks as well. You know, if you decide to put a fountain in that roundabout at Coast Village, that'd be great.
We have that.
Yes, thank you very much. She seemed very enthusiastic about it, and I hope some of these programs are as fruitful as we all hope. Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to our next item, item number five, which is a staff hearing officer appeal. It's an appeal filed by Derek Weston, attorney, on the application of Justin Van Mullum, agent for Alamar Partners, address 222 West Alamar Avenue. Staff report to be given by Suzanne Johnston. Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair Myers, fellow commissioners, I have the project before as the appeal of 222 West Alamar. The project is shown on the screen as to what was approved at the staff hearing officer on December 5th, which consisted of the demolition of the existing residence and garage, and construction of a new two-story building and attached garages. Two one-bedroom units and a one-car garage, and for each of those units, and a one-two-bedroom unit with a two-car garage. The approval consisted of two modifications for, one for parking, reduction by one space from five to four, and front yard... from five to four, and front yard setback for the first floor to encroach into the required 20-foot SD2 zone setback. They also approved the tentative subdivision map, which is a one-lot subdivision for the purposes of three condominiums. The appellant raised the following issues or concerns. They felt that the front yard encroachment would have a significant adverse impact on the neighborhood. The parking modification, they felt the findings could not be made or justified to approve the reduction in parking. And the approval of the tentative subdivision map would destroy a historic...potential historic building and adversely impact the neighborhood character. This is an aerial of the surrounding neighborhood showing a mixture of multi-unit, single-family, duplexes, RV park, and many commercial businesses that line Delevina from Constance up to State On this slide, I wanted to show you what the front yard setback for SD2 zone actually, how it reads in the ordinance, which is any building greater than 15 feet or two-story or more would require that 20-foot front yard setback. And this actually shows where the SD2 zone actually stops along Alamar. It's only on the northwest really side. So directly across the street, the residential units only have the R3 zone and would need to meet a 10-foot setback for a two-story building. These are just some other two-story buildings that are in the neighborhood in the general And I think I hit all the main points except for I did want to state that the parking modification was approved for the reduction of parking based on a city policy that the two one-bedroom units are smaller than 750 square feet, and the demand for that unit would be calculated at one space per unit. So that's how we justified that modification for the reduction in one parking space. With regards to the potential historic building, the historic structure report was reviewed and accepted by the HLC, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Historic Landmarks Commission forwarded the project onto the staff hearing officer with relatively positive comments, and they did not request for the listing of the building to become a designated historic resource. And I believe the appellant has their own presentation...or the applicant has their own presentation as well as I'm sure the appellant has a presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, then we can hear for the applicant's presentation.
Shall we hear the...we hear the appellant first?
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Would the appellant like to make a presentation? If you could state your name, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Myers, members of the commission. My name is Derek Weston, and I'm representing Joel Pedersen and Ellen Frazier. Joel is the owner of the house, and Ellen Frazier lives in the house at the moment that is immediately west of the project in question at 224 West Alamar. So I submitted a letter. I trust you have received it dated February 4th for the reasons we stated in that letter. We think the size, bulk, and scale is simply a little bit too much for this particular property. And we think that that size, bulk, and scale is reflected in the fact that two different modifications are necessary, both an encroachment into the front yard setback and parking, and that the result is a project that is not compatible with the existing developed neighborhood. Now, I have read the staff report with care. It's excellent staff report, and I understand the rationale for each of staff's conclusions as to why this project is approvable. But it's one thing to say that it is possible to prove a project, and another thing to say that it should be approved. It is discretionary. It is a subdivision. You have to make findings that it is in full compliance with the applicable zoning ordinance. There's a legal question on which I know the city attorney has a different view, that the modification allows you to make a finding that is consistent with the law. But I think it should not be a legalistic question and rather a practical question of whether this particular project is appropriate. Now, there are still a number of one- and two-story smaller cottages in the neighborhood. I think it's inappropriate to be misled by the commercial projects on Delevina Street. There obviously is an abrupt transition to a business district when you're actually on Delevina Street. So although the overhead shot that we're looking at at the moment shows that, when you are living in the residential area, you're experiencing a residential environment. And of course, it's true that this is an area that is in transition. There are a number of big projects that have been built in the past, apartments and condos. I'm not sure all of those are desirable. They certainly are effectuating a change. But what is important now, we can only deal with the present, is to make sure that all new projects fit in to the greatest extent possible. And this is a three-unit project on only 6,000 square feet. The zoning density is 12 units per acre. The effective zoning of this project is 22 units per acre, almost double the mandated zoning. And we think, and I trust you all were able to do a site visit, we think that the project as designed overwhelms the house of my clients immediately to the west, especially with facade and the massing on that west side. So let me talk briefly about these two modifications. Front yard setbacks are important. We had an appeal a few years ago regarding a front yard setback modification that was approved on Stanley Drive, and the city council and the members of the architectural review board emphasized that front yard setbacks really are important because that setback belongs to the community. Now, it may be that across the street, the setback is only 10 feet, but it's 20 feet on the north side of the property. That's the setback that's relevant, and that's what helps preserve the character and openness of the entire community. Now, it may be that there are projects...other projects, as the staff report states, that do involve an encroachment into the 20-yard setback...20-foot setback, excuse me. But I believe it's true that those projects are smaller, older homes built before the new standard. And it's simply, I think, not a good analysis to say the fact that there are some other houses that encroach into 20-yard setback means that any house now should be able to encroach in the setback, even if it is a very large structure. I think that if there is to be any encroachment, there should be compensation with respect to the rest of the design, either a greater side yard setback or some reduction of the massing so that the overall effect is not too great. I'm also very concerned about the parking modification. The fact is that this area, particularly this block, because it's so close to Delevina, experiences a significant current parking problem. It's obvious what happens. There are lots of businesses with inadequate parking on Delevina, so people park in this residential area and walk a block or two to work. What that means is that the staff analysis, which recites that there have been similar modifications to parking in the past, shouldn't necessarily apply to this particular block, which is already experiencing a parking problem. So we think that the facts ought to control the situation. In an area that already has a parking problem, we shouldn't do anything that exacerbates that issue. Even if that were not the case, I think that we need to apply a stricter standard. Parking really matters. Now, we all wish that there were fewer cars and there were more people walking to work, but we have to deal with reality. There is currently a parking problem, and this project with the modification will exacerbate that parking problem. I think this is really a critical decision because I'm told, and I don't have the figures in front of me, that there are roughly 18 large projects that are proposed for this area. So whatever you do on this one will be a precedent for future projects and will lead to quite dramatic change in the neighborhood over the coming years. Obviously, there are lots of people who would love to see no change. We know that the neighborhood will change. It will change dramatically. Lots of the smaller houses, maybe all of them, will be torn down and larger projects built. One can bemoan that, but we know that's going to happen. But that doesn't mean that we should give up on the neighborhood. And to be honest, I have a little bit of the feeling in the analysis I've read that there's a throwing up of the hands. People say, you know, Cottage Hospital is putting a lot of pressure on the residential neighborhoods to the southwest. Delevina is putting pressure on the neighborhoods to the east and kind of tossing up your hands. And that's something I think we shouldn't do. I think this project needs to be adjusted. Certainly, they're entitled to build a substantially different and larger project. We raised the issue of the historic value of the house, and obviously, we'd love to see it preserved, but from reading the staff analysis, I can see why that's a hard case to make. But that doesn't mean that we should give up on the neighborhood. So I appreciate your taking the time to listen to me. In addition to everything else, I wanted to add that we are particularly concerned with the massing on the left side, which faces our client's property, 224 West Alamar. And I want to make sure that you saw the two letters that have been submitted by local neighborhood associations. The Oak Park Neighbors Association has filed a letter or an email letter expressing their concern, and John DeVore has filed a letter emphasizing the importance of front yard setback for the community. And I note that...I don't know if it's stated in his letter, but Mr. DeVore serves both on the Sammerkan Neighborhood Association and on the Allied Neighbors Association. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there questions for the appellant from the commission? I don't see any. Is there anything additional that the applicant would like to add?
Yes.
I think I'm on now. There we go. Can we turn on my PowerPoint?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Justin Van Mullum. I'm with On Design Architects, and I represent the fourth owner of 222 West Alamar. I've had the opportunity to represent all four, and these owners have really stuck to it. It's been a difficult and long road, but we're still here. We are here to address the three issues that are in front of you from the appeal. The front yard setback modification from the SD2 zone, the parking modification for one space, and the potential historic structures issue. I'm going to start with the front yard setback modification. Just as staff has pointed out, this is an unusual area that the SD2 zone kind of was...had a broad brush stroke, and this particular area was the very end of that broad brush stroke. And it's different than State Street, certainly. It's...on the other side, we have an R2 zone, so you could have a two-story building 10 feet from the property line, similar to the buildings that are shown on the other side of the lot. And here, on the other side of the lot, we've got several different two-story buildings, most of which are 10 feet from the property line with nothing that kind of reduces the mass, like a porch or any type of roofing. So it's a different neighborhood. This is a transitional neighborhood. We've got a lot of commercial, and we've got a lot of high density. And then we have these three lots that are kind of sandwiched in between them. And that's what we're kind of talking about, is what's going to happen to these three lots. One of the lots has, if you see on the screen, 224 West Alamar, that is the building that is on that lot in the back of the lot. I think at your site visit, you saw that building from the RV park, Mobile Home Park. You can see that it's right on the...just a couple of feet from the property line, we've got a two-story structure at the back. So this is an area, this is a neighborhood of high density. We are asking for an encroachment of square footage of only 134 square feet. That's it, just 134 square feet that is encroaching into that front yard setback of 20 feet that's habitable. The rest of it is just covered porch, 134 square feet. The part that encroaches on the second floor is zero, so our second floor meets the 20-foot I'd like to talk a little bit about the parking modification. Now, this is a lot that is in a transitional neighborhood. We have high-density housing on one side, and we've got high-density commercial on the other. We've got the auto repair shop. We've got laundry facilities, restaurants. This is also a walking neighborhood. I have...I'm fortunate enough to live close by to this, and we walk through the longs, to the Trader Joe's, coffee shops, and it is a very nice walking neighborhood. Some of the sidewalks aren't exactly wide enough for a double stroller, but still, it's a very nice walking neighborhood. We started with a project that had five parking spaces, and it worked. It was a little bulkier than the project that we have today, and HLC was the group that suggested that we reduce our parking and reduce the size of our units. So by reducing the size of our units to less than 750 square feet, basically 714 and 651, I know that sounds ridiculously small because we do three-car garages that are larger than that. But this is a different type of project because this is a different type of neighborhood, and we feel that it fits well. The amount of square footage that we have on this lot is only 2,409 square feet. That's what it all adds up to, 2,409 square feet. We have greater side yards, as the appellant was talking about. Our side yards undulate back and forth, and so we've created a lot of nice green areas on the first floor. Our private outdoor living space is not being provided on the second floor, cantilevering some driveway. It is on the first floor for every unit, which we're quite proud of. As a matter of fact, one of the members of HLC, Bill Lavoie, called this site plan ingenious, believe it or not. If you know Bill, you know that that's quite something. So I'd like to also talk about a project that was in front of your board in November of 2005. Many of the members are still the same. It was a project on 826 Bass Street, and it was a parking modification for two very small units. There was existing house that we were keeping, and these were two one-bedroom units. The project was approved, and it is almost complete, and it's creating wonderful workforce housing in that neighborhood. And I'm very proud to be a part of that project, and you should be, too. So moving on to the historic structures issue. Well, we learned a lot in that project on Bass Street. We kept the existing house. It was in much better condition than this house, but it still had to be brought down to the studs, and we had to...what we saved was the windows and the doors, and that's about it, and some of the really nice architectural features. But because of the codes today, the building code requires you to update a building that's going to be a condominium to 66% of structural codes. Well, that means you take it down to the studs. The foundation for Bass Street was on stone, just like this one. It had to be completely lifted up or redug, and at the end of it, it just didn't have as much historic integrity as we wished. And this building is a single-wall construction, and it's right on the property line. And it just...no matter how we tried to incorporate it into the project, it just didn't work. So what we did is we came back with a design. You can see that this is a photo sim. It's shown from across the street. It shows the whole project, although you would not see the whole project if you were driving up the street or down the street or even at the corner intersection of Alamar and Delevina. But we showed the whole project. And to give you an idea of how tall the existing building is, it is approximately...at the bottom of where the top dormer is on the front, that's where the existing building that's right on the property line. Right across the street is an R3 zone. So this neighborhood will change over time. The SD2 zone, we're only encroaching 130 square feet, 134 square feet into that zone. The encroachment is supported by HLC, by the Planning Department, and by show. The parking demand is being met on-site. Transportation has supported that modification. The Planning Department has supported the modification. And HLC strongly urged us to go in that direction and supports that modification. So this is a perfect lot for this type of project, in a neighborhood that's a transitional neighborhood, that can handle the density. And what better place to have this type of project, workforce housing, next to a transit corridor, a business corridor, and one of the major employers of the county? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Ms. Larson?
Thank you. Justin, can you point out the appellant's home? Nobody's pointed that out on PowerPoint, which side it is, or?
It is, it is on, let's see if I can, it's on this side, right here. And that two-story structure was the structure that's, it's about in this location right here that I showed you, that was 224 West Alamar.
Right.
And I can go back to that slide. 224 West Alamar. So that's in the back. They have a parking structure that's in between that, and then they have the original kind of Craftsman, one-story, chocolate-ground building that's right next to our lot.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing for this project. I have four speaker slips. If anyone else wishes to speak, please fill one out. Our first speaker is Karen Cobberly, followed by Joel Peterson. If you could keep your comments to two minutes, it would be appreciated.
I won't be able to keep any to two minutes. I figure if an appellant can have more than two, I might take more. First thing I'd like to ask any of you is, have you been to Santa Barbara RV Park and come in the back and looked at what we will be looking at? I saw you all over at 222 West Alamar yesterday, in the backyard. And you cannot see from their backyard what you will be impeding from our yards. But we are right behind that. I've lived there 18 years. I've got an established garden, and a household that is dependent on directional sunlight, privacy, fresh air, and these will all be taken away. When a redevelopment builds up, it infringes on all the neighbors' access to previously available elements: sunlight, privacy, fresh air, and established views. These four aspects of housing, although we can't own them, are necessary for a happy, helpful life, particularly in California, we take it for granted: sunlight, fresh air. These are the very things that I believe are guaranteed to all of us by, quote, "certain unalienable rights," that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted. And that is your job. I am a renter. I have lived here for 32 years. I have rented all over Santa Barbara. I am glad you bring up a tree issue. This property I've lived behind for 18 years, had four full-grown trees on it when I moved in, a Canary Island palm tree, full-size, that was cut down, a 50-year-old oak tree that was cut down on a Saturday morning at 7:30 in the morning, the minute, I believe, Mr. Fuel took possession of this property. Perhaps it was sooner, it was in the middle of 2006. No permit. They did try to cut down a 75-year-old Tory, Italian stone pine tree. No permit. They were stopped and had to procure a permit. The behavior is obviously indicative that they are not caring about what goes on in their neighborhood with people who have lived there for so long that they become attached to what is there: views, trees, fresh air. To take these things, if this project were not to affect the neighbors negatively in regards to sunlight and privacy, then there would be no fuss. But to take these, to take from all of us the very basic things that make living in California the blessing that it is every day we are here, to take them away and let a two-story development claim them all for themselves, that's robbery of the most insidious and occult kind. We have no protection. We are just renters. If you want to work on density, you would behoove yourself to go into Santa Barbara RV Park and see how 35 spaces can live together and be happy, and be very dense, very dense, more dense than any development can be. And it's more happy. And we've had city officials come to our RV park and stand there between Mission Creek and Alamar, and look around, say, "This place is heaven." Heaven. And I take exception to the sniggering about an RV park. I grew up in a mansion built by Reginald Johnson's son in Ranch of Santa Fe. I've lived in every manner of home in Santa Barbara, and I love my 1957 United Coach better than anything I have seen in this town. And my rent is $500 a month. So I think that is probably the brightest way to go, if you're going to try and live in Santa Barbara and become dense. This development increases density, which we are fighting in SB. I believe we are already too dense, too many people. Parking is at a premium, not only on streets, but with the time limits. We're talking about time limits with the parking, one-sided parking, and street cleaning, which makes parking even more scarce. They happen all days of the week, and we are scrambling. And we in the trailer park are only allowed one space, and we have more cars, and we are scrambling in our neighborhoods, and we have neighbors chasing our cars out of neighborhoods for which we should have a right to park in. In going forward with this development, you are ruling that we, the neighbors, make an enormous readjustment in our lives, homes, and gardens. For me personally, this two-story building means three to four hours less of sunlight daily, which means my garden of 18 years, established, will have to be completely changed. I will have no privacy, none.
Ms. Cobberly, I've given you five minutes, so if you could please wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, no airflow from Mission Creek. A vote for this project is a direct vote against a smaller carbon footprint, which I think I've heard many people in the City Council discuss. It's a vote against nature, and it's a vote against our beloved pueblo, which is what it was in 1976 when I moved here. If you move forward, if you move forward without my approval and blessing, I will adjust my sights accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joel Peterson, followed by Ellen Frazier.
My name is Joel Peterson. I have the house at 224 West Alamar. And I oppose the magnitude of the development at 222 West Alamar, specifically the density, height, bulk, and scale, lessen parking requirements, and the modifications required. I understand this area is slated for high-density, 17 projects are supposedly in the works to be built there. It's already experiencing problems from high density, and I wouldn't see why we would need to make that problem any worse. My second concern is the elevation directly up to my side of 224 West Alamar. The building is basically a minimum setback in the rear, minimum setback in the side, and modification required setback toward the front, and a big panel that basically goes to the sky. So I would just be looking at an enormous building from my point of view. I don't think any sort of screening could be able to alleviate that problem. Existing historical building that's going to be torn down is two stories now, and it is on a raised-floor foundation. The existing story poles dwarf this building. It would seem to me that a new project built slab-on-grade would have, with decent plate heights and roof lines, would be even lower than what the historical building that's going to be torn down looks like. So I would just hope you guys take these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Frazier, to be followed by Paula Westbury.
Hi, my name's Ellen Frazier. I live at 224B West Alamar, one of the units in the back. I think, first of all, they're not showing that the house is right next door to their proposed project, is just a one-story, small unit, and this, what they're proposing, will just be way, way taller. I mean, it just isn't showing that. But I wanted to quickly, a friend of mine drove by the property yesterday and sent me this email this morning, and this kind of wraps up what I've heard from everybody I know that's seen the story poles. Says, "We drove by to see the impact of the story poles, and the overall feel of the, what it was going to do to your property, how it's going to cramp your property, and the overall feel of the neighborhood. While there will be, while there are more than enough multifamily properties in your immediate area, that doesn't mean that every property should be developed to the maximum height, width, and breadth of the available land space just for the purpose of increased profits for the property owner, without regard for the neighboring property owner's land value and/or aesthetic qualities. Ask the panel if they would like to live at a property where they needed to drive through a canyon of neighboring structures to get to their residence. Not to mention that the front house on your property would go from a feeling of open, light, and airy home to a feeling of being in a cave." And that's pretty much what I've heard from everybody who's seen the size of this structure, proposed structure. My concerns are what it's going to do to my property value, of course. Pulling out of that driveway already is sketchy. If there's cars parked on each side of the road, which there always are, you can't see to pull out. And so I usually have to hang back to be able to see if anybody's coming. And if there's a garage going up right there, there goes my visibility. The noise level is just atrocious. Five more, or five units, or, rather, three units, five-bedroom total, will truly impact that. And parking in that neighborhood is just disastrous already. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Paula Westbury will be our last speaker.
This is an example of what's happening in Santa Barbara. This is a 9,000-year-old old-growth redwood tree house. The one next door is similar, but they're two that look very much like one another. I noticed these a long time ago, just driving down the street. They look like antiques. You need to save them. Santa Barbara has to save their housing, have to preserve Santa Barbara. This is really big stuff, 9,000-year-old tree, redwood tree. They bought them down in the 20s. They built them all over Santa Barbara. Most of old Santa Barbara has it. Most of old Santa Barbara has it. It's all been going into the ocean. You have to save this one. You really have to save this one. This is full of holy people that help people to be well. There's one tree they want to tear down that helps stop hurricanes. I do a lot of Indian stuff, and you don't want to lose any trees, anywhere. You've seen the wind sometimes. The trees have been living with wind for millions of years. They know things that we don't know about, and the Indians knew how to do these things somehow, more than we know. This is just one of the things we find out. Should not have condos here at all. You should preserve the house, preserve the yard, preserve everything in the yard. The neighbors need the sunlight. The house that is there is 10 in an earthquake, in the daytime, 25 at night. Okay? 25 at night. The holy people help it be stronger, for all kinds of reasons I can't go into. But the ones that they want to build will not last in an earthquake, they're a two. So twos happen on the outskirts of Santa Barbara, but they haven't been happening within Santa Barbara for a while. But every day you look at the paper, the earthquake map, there's twos all around, all around. So you shouldn't allow this project to be built at all. It is not safe at all. Just leave what's there, preserve everything, preserve everything, preserve everything. The area, anyway, they're overbuilding everything. They don't need them anymore. You don't need condos. You need community housing. It's remarkable quality and antique value, and somehow, the city hasn't figured out how to preserve these yet. They should all be on the Historic Register immediately, immediately, immediately. And if they can do it right now, it would be good, because we can't tear down Santa Barbara anymore. So save the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula. In addition to the letters that Mr. Weston noted, we also received a number of other letters, one from John Grinnold, who agrees with the project, with the Historic Landmarks Committee proposal for the project, Vivian LaFrance, who's against the project, Arthur Peterson, who's against the project, and I believe there's one more, and a John McMagno, who's for the project. So with that, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Thompson?
I have a question for staff. Mrs. Cobberly from the RV park brought up the question about blocking the light. Was any shadow analysis done? Because looking at the plan, it would appear, with the orientation to the north and so forth, that any shadowing from an easterly direction, that's the only thing that could impact the RV park. It looks like it would not fall very much on the RV park, but I don't see any analysis. I just wonder if any was done.
Commissioner, I could answer that question. Yes, there was full analysis of the solar ordinance done on the project.
And could you expand on what that showed, as far as how far onto the RV park any shadowing would fall?
We meet, we meet the solar ordinance. We're not asking for any modification from the solar ordinance. So we are in compliance with the solar ordinance. One of the things is that in the RV park, the structures are right up on the property line. They don't have a setback that they are, that those RV parks, the RV structures are so close to the setback or on the property. So that is one issue. Maybe that's why there's more shadowing than it would be if they were abiding by the setbacks.
Ms. Jacobs?
That was in part my question, too, about the solar ordinance. But it sounds like staff did a study, in addition to the applicant.
We did check it for compliance with our solar ordinance. Through just rough measurements, we did not do a shadow diagram.
You did not do a shadow diagram?
Correct.
Okay. But we could request one in the design review process, or?
The shadow diagram is usually only requested when the applicant is asking for not exactly complying with the solar ordinance requirements. And when the applicant is able to meet the solar ordinance, then we don't usually ask for the, we don't ask for the shadowing diagram. You could request it, but I'm not sure how much it's going to help if you approve the project as proposed.
Right. Thanks. My second question is about the landscape plan for the project. Is this a landscape plan that's been approved by the Design Review Board? Is there a, and can you tell me what kinds of trees are going along the back lot line? I see them in the diagram, but they're not spelled out.
The color, color site plan is just kind of, for looks, we've got, in the plan set that you had, the very last page was the landscape plan, and that is a fruitless pear tree. Those three that are along the property line right here are fruitless pear trees, the ones that are flowering right now along the street.
Around town, yeah.
And then this right here is an oak, and this is jacaranda. And these are, I believe they're called Marina Arupus, or something? Obviously, this is not my expertise, but it has, it's kind of like, it has a strawberry fruit on it, and it's, it has a nice green leaf, and it's an evergreen.
It's evergreen, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is for Justin Van Mullin. When we were at our site visit on Tuesday, we had noticed, in fact, if you want to go back to that aerial photograph that you had of the neighborhood, that the
that you had, the very last page was the landscape plan, and that is a fruitless pear tree. Those three that are along the property line right here are fruitless pear trees, the ones that are flowering right now along the street.
Around town, yeah.
And then this right here is an oak, and this is a jacaranda, and these are, I believe they're called Marina Arduus, this or something. Obviously, this is not my expertise, but it has, it's kind of like, it has a strawberry fruit on it, and it's, it has a nice green leaf, and it's an evergreen.
It's evergreen, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is for Justin Van Mullen. When we were at our site visit on Tuesday, we had noticed, in fact, if you want to go back to that aerial photograph that you had of the neighborhood, that the, the street narrows in front of your project, and that it's a much greater distance from the curb to the front property line than on the adjacent properties or the properties across the street. Were you able to establish a measurement for the curb-to-property-line dimension?
We did, we did measure that, and it was, it was interesting, because we had a six-foot sidewalk and an eight-foot parkway, and then another eight inches on the other side of the sidewalk that we talked about. And that was, it's true, and it's different than the rest of the sidewalk, since the parkway is much wider because of that elbow.
Right. Thank you. And then I have another question for staff to help remind us how the SD2 setbacks were created and what the original intent was. As I understand, it was to limit commercial growth and traffic, and it wasn't necessarily intended for residential properties, even though the boundaries encompass areas with residential properties.
Chair, Chair Myers and Commissioner Bartlet, I think Mr. Bartlet's actually covered that pretty well on the whole. It was, it was, it covered a wide area of the Upper State Street area, because we wanted to make sure that projects within that area did contribute to the funding of improvements in the area. So from the sense that any project, residential or commercial, would contribute to traffic in the Upper State Street area, then they would pay into the fees that were collected to complete the improvements that have been done in the Upper State Street area, that were completed in the 1980s. When those fees went away, we still had some limitation on development in the Upper State Street area above and beyond the zoning in order to reduce the intensity of development. And although the primary focus was on commercial, it didn't preclude some of that related to the residential use as well.
And then maybe one more point of clarity on the interpretation of that. It seems that in years past, one-story portions of buildings could be built at the 10 feet and two-story portions at 20. Now, the interpretation has migrated that if there's any portion of the building that's two-story, the entire structure needs to be back 20 feet. So when did that change, and is it official?
It's, it's very official. The interpretation, the earlier interpretation was what was wrong. The actual plain language of the ordinance says, says that one-story buildings and buildings less than 15 feet in height are subject to the 10-foot setback. For two-story buildings or any building that exceeds 15 feet, the building is setback 20 feet. So it didn't differentiate that the portion of the building that exceeded that would be setback. But because there are other places in the zoning ordinance that do say that, we did make that interpretation at the time, but we were corrected several years ago on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlet, you want to continue with comments?
Well, first of all, I think the program for this specific project is an important one, because it really leads us to where I think we want to be in building small units close to downtown, where people don't need to rely on the automobile for everything. And the fact that two of these units are probably smaller than many of the single- and double-wide trailers that are complaining about this project, I think speaks for itself. And the project is also providing covered parking for those, as opposed to having it exposed for everybody to look at. So I think the intent of this program of building the small units is, is really valid, and we need to, I think, embrace projects that come forward voluntarily, offering this without us having to force them to get there. I think that the Landmarks Commission has been quite astute in their observations on this project, and asking that the, the project replicate all the historic detailing of the existing structure. And I think that your drawings indicate that you've done that well. And given that the units, the two one-bedroom units are so small, I find that the parking modification request is justified. There's certainly large areas of town where you can have huge units with only one car, and this is so close to the transit lines, I think that it would be more impactful for the neighborhood to try and build more garages or more open parking that people would have to look at. So I would be supportive of the parking modification. Also, on the setback issue, I find that with the additional distance to the front curb, because of the way the street tapers, and with what I've heard in the past from Commissioner White, the stringline approach of the adjacent buildings, that building should probably be closer to the street and not penalized. So I will be able to support the project. I think it, it complies with the spirit and intent of what the SD2 setbacks were by setting the second floor back beyond the 20-foot line. And the elements that we are getting at the street are charm-giving, open porches and front doors and all the things that we like to see, that we don't have in a lot of the other projects in the neighborhood. So I find that I can support the project.
Thank you. Seeing the other lights, I'll bounce, Mr. White.
Let's go down the line. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reluctantly agree with Mr. Bartlet's conclusions. I, I think I have a harder time with the, with what the neighbors are going, are experiencing there. I mean, I feel like they're, they're going to experience a legitimate disruption and a change there that is going to be uncomfortable. And yet, I, I think that the points that Mr. Bartlet made about, about the transit-based small units, and also, I feel like HLC has headed this project in the direction of, of the parking mod, when the project first proposed an additional covered parking space. I have, I have, I feel like I need to support that, and I, I am a little concerned about the, the bulk of the project as being high. But as I say, having, having, this project, having gone through what it has gone through to get here, I will stay on course with it and provide its support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. I also live in this, have walked in, around in this neighborhood. It's a very Walker-friendly neighborhood and a good place to be putting some R3-style housing, even though it is technically the SD2 overlay. The R3 zone is its immediate neighborhood. And for the same reason as Commissioner Bartlet outlined, the small unit size leads me to support the parking modification. This is a congested area for parking, and if the neighborhood feels strongly enough about it, they could apply to the city for a parking permit program, which would restrict who can park on the street and would ensure that people that live in the neighborhood would always have a parking spot. But we cannot do that from here. It needs to be initiated at the neighborhood level. So I would encourage the neighborhood to investigate that. The streetscape and the front yard modification is a bit more difficult. I thought long and hard about this modification request, and I did recall the Stanley Drive case, that the city council reviewed a, a front yard setback encroachment, and basically informed us and the public that front yard setbacks are a little different from side and backyards, because it is the public open space. But there are some differences between this project proposal and Stanley Drive. One is that it straddles a zone change, and on one side of the street, 10 feet is okay, but on this side of the street, it's not. But in terms of neighborhood compatibility, the front yard encroachment is, is appropriate. The street narrows, as the site plan shows, and Mr. Bartlet pointed out. And most importantly, the encroachment along the street is significant. The applicant had a, a diagram that showed that most of the street has encroachment into the front yard setback. There are really only one or two buildings that do not. The apartments and the buildings further down the street all encroach into the setback. And so regarding the setback modification, I do support it because of the zoning change and this, and the neighborhood compatibility that is linked to it. And I support it because the open space along the street, which was an issue on Stanley Drive, is not an issue here. That open space has been already significantly compromised. This does not change that at all, and yet allows for a successful design on the, on the lot. Again, referring back to those smaller units and the very good site plan, I think the modification is justified. It also provides for the front yard porch and for the very comfortable address of the street. People walking by, people sitting on the porch, the front door, all creates and adds to the neighborhood, and I think will add, will be an improvement. I want to speak just briefly about design, and this goes as much to staff. I'm looking at the conditions of approval, and we are sending a mixed message to the project in terms of some of the conflicting requirements from the Historic Structures Report, the HLC, and the ABR. The Historic Structures Report has requested that the style of the existing house be maintained, but the style of the existing house is a working-class Victorian 1890s. It's a tall structure with high-peak roofs in keeping with that era. Meanwhile, HLC and ABR are saying, can you, can you make it shorter? But really, that's not, not possible. That's conflicting information, and if we can clear that up in the conditions of approval, I know I would feel better about sending it on to its next stage. My personal feeling is that maintaining the working-class Victorian ethic is, is much more important. It's not an overly tall building. It's barely taller than the one next to it, which is one-story. And the, as it has been pointed out, we are losing some of that, that era in our city in the rush to make so much of it Spanish-style or Craftsman-style. We often put aside the early Victorian era of the city, and it's a beautiful one, with the gracious porches and beautiful trees. And so I'd like to keep that reference in there. I'd also like to add to the conditions that the building be offered for donation or salvage, and that the sandstone foundation stones be recycled and reused on the site or otherwise donated. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, after considering the appellant's concerns today and listening to all the testimony, as well as reviewing the plans and a site visit and reviewing the HLC's meetings, minutes, and so forth, I, I can't support the appeal. We hear a lot about the three words, size, bulk, and scale, used together all the time. Let's talk about each one of those. Size, the building proposed covers about one-third of the lot, so it's not oversized. Bulk, it's two-story structure that is not much taller than the one-story structure next to it, and so I can't, with its layout on the lot, find that it's bulky. Scale, it's definitely a human-scale building. That's what we talk about, scale, whether it's a human scale. So I don't find those points as being very germane to the issue. The issue with parking, I agree with what Commissioner Bartlet said, that small one-bedroom units are appropriate for such a parking program. And the two mods that are in question, the front yard setback, the primary encroachment into the front yard setback is a front porch, which, as we keep hearing, makes for a much neighbor-friendlier facade on a building than just taking the porch off and having a doorway facing the street. It doesn't seem out of character for the rest of the neighborhood when you look at the other setbacks of the other buildings in the neighborhood. And as I mentioned, the parking mod was a result of the HLC trying to take some size out of the building and recommended that they downsize the bedrooms and go for a smaller parking footprint. If we increase the parking requirement to five, it's going to only raise the footprint of the building, and we're back for those issues of size and bulk. So those are the reasons that I would uphold the staff hearing officer's approval of the project as it exists. And I concur with the request that Commissioner Jacobs had regarding investigating, relocating the, or at least offering to relocate the building if someone wanted to try to do that, although considering the condition that it's in, it may not be liable to do that. But at least we should investigate it. Thank you.
Ms. Larson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this, this, this appeal is very tough, because I feel very sympathetic to the appellant, and, but there are compelling positive things about the project. And I think one of the things that has driven the design of the project is probably the location of the cut for the driveway, which is adjacent to the, to another driveway cut, which actually creates a setback on the side towards the tire shop. And if the plan could be flipped, just in, just turned over and then put back down and a different curb cut used, that would set it back considerably from, from the appellant's property. And so it's unfortunate that that piece of driveway can't be used for setback, as it is being used on the other side. It would provide huge relief. And to me, it would seem very, but I'm not an architect. To me, it's real easy, just flop it and you're done. The, but the parking mod, the parking mod, I can support, but I do encourage the residential, excuse me? Sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. The, I can support the parking mod, no problem. Although I wonder, can, can the people who purchase these small units be restricted to one-car ownership? I don't know if that's possible or not, but can we consider that? Is that something to be?
We can't control it, and we can't enforce it.
All right. That's fine. Just wondered. And the front yard setback, although I understand that it doesn't, with the amenity of a front porch, and it, it does address what we want it to, it's, I don't have a problem with that. I'm wondering about the, if there could be more relief from the height of the building by removing some volume from the rooms, maybe another foot or two. I, I assume the plate heights inside are probably, I mean, the floor-to-floor is probably 10 feet. I, I'm not sure, but if it could be brought down a little, that'd be great. But I, I can't, the problem I have is it, is I can't, I don't, I, I'm stumbling around, because I really am a person who wants to preserve the neighborhood feel. And I'm struggling, because this project does address such great need, and it does, it does it in an adroit sort of way. So I can't, it's hard for me to say it, but I can't support the appeal. So I'm very regretful about that. Most regretful. But I can't do it. So I have to be honest. And I'm just screechingly, with my little two-square-feet here, looking for something to help, but I, I can't do it. So although I'm very sympathetic, my apologies. I feel terrible. But anyway, that's where I am.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Mr. Chair, there's, there is one tool that the city has used in such, in parking mod situations, which may be appropriate for this project, and that is to condition it such that the, if there is a parking permit program that is implemented in the future, that, that the occupants or owners of this project would not be eligible for those permits. So that may be an appropriate condition.
Thank you, Mr. White. Well, from my own thoughts, I don't know if I can add anything more. They fall in line with the other commissioners. I appreciate Mr. Bartlet's so succinctly outlining the benefits of the project, the vetting that the HLC did, and the scrutiny that they gave to the project, and our attention that needs to be given there. However, I looked at this project long and hard as well, and it was hard to come to that conclusion. It's always nice to be able to prove a project without any modifications, and in looking at this one, you could say that, you know, two- looking at this one, you could say that, you know, two units would fit just as nicely here, and a lot of them odds would, could go away with that. However, I don't think that the neighbors would be impacted any less by a building that would fit that description. So I appreciate the project as it is. I do believe it serves a strong need, and it's an appropriate place for that need. So I too can support the project. Ms. Jacobs.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would be willing to make a motion if there's no further discussion. I move that the Commission deny the appeal and uphold the staff hearing officer decision with the following amendments to the conditions of approval. First, that the building be offered for donation or salvage. Secondly, that sandstone be reused on-site or donated. And, and thirdly, that the, that in the design process, I believe it's going back to ABR, is that where it's headed next? Okay. That the ABR support the Historic Structures Report requirement to incorporate the historic elements and structure, design elements similar to the structure that is there, and similar to, and which is what the applicant has proposed. So I would say we are supporting the design that has been presented to us as well.
Is that parking permit?
That, that should a parking, a residential parking permit program be instituted on this street, that the owners of the units would not be eligible for those permits.
I would put that as residents of the units.
Residents of the units.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're speaking to the same conditions of approval. There's a revised Resolution 102-07 from the staff hearing officer that contains the findings and modified conditions. We will add the ones that you're bringing up now, but I want to make sure we're talking to the same document.
I'm going to...
Exhibit B of the staff report.
Right, they're revised and updated as of January 29, 2008, is what the footnote says.
Yes.
So I'm looking at pages five and six, where the design elements are outlined.
Yes.
So we would be looking at Condition C, and that would be Condition C2 regarding the Architectural Board of Review and the design elements. And I'm not sure if the offering the building for donation goes under Item C for Design Review or Item E for Community Development Requirements, but it would be one of those on page five or page six.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bartlett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries six-zero. This is appealable to City Council within ten business days, or ten days, I'm sorry. We'll recess for 15 minutes, be back at 3 o'clock.